Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. Great to see all your smiling faces this evening. Appreciate everybody making the trip out for Part III. A little unprecedented, well, I'm sure we've been there before, but not recently. So it does seem we have a quorum at this point, so just barely. So please, nobody leave. We're going to try to get through this as quickly as possible, but also obviously need to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to weigh in. So with that said, for those of you that may not know, my name is Sean Clancy, the Carver Town Moderator. Very pleased to be presiding over this Part III of Carver's annual town meeting. Just some general points. We do have portable listening devices that are available upon request, so just raise your hand and we'll be happy to get one over to you. We also have portable microphones for those who are unable to move to the microphones at the end of the aisles. So again, just go ahead and raise your hand during debate and we'll go ahead and bring a microphone over to you for your convenience. All registered voters who are residents of the town of Carver are pleased, asked to sit in the front areas up here. If you are a non-resident, we ask you to sit in the rear, my rear-left quadrant, in the upper-left quadrant there, your right-upper quadrant there. So please adhere to that, just so we can maintain who is a resident and who is not. And as always, these proceedings are recorded and broadcast by Area 58 Cable Television, cable television, and they're taking place here in the Carver Middle High School Auditorium at 6 South Meadow Road in Carver, Massachusetts. Out of respect and courtesy to our proceedings, please silence or set your cellphones to vibrate. At this point, as I mentioned, Tarek, Town Clerk Cara Dayhill has advised me that we have a quorum of at least 150 qualified voters. We're just a little over at about 154, maybe a little extra, as I saw a few more people walk in. So therefore, I declare that a quorum being present this annual town meeting Part III will be called to order at 6:09 PM on Tuesday, April 19, 2022. We're going to dispense with all of the introductories. I think you don't have to cheer, that's fine. We're just going to get right into the business. So with that, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll move right into it. So please rise when you say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the bill for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder, during the course of the proceedings, we may have a few individuals who are not Carver voters who are required by their official duties to speak on an article, including Town Council, the Town Administrator, and other town employees. Unless I hear any objections now, I'll let these individuals speak when recognized. Okay, hearing no objections, we'll go ahead with that. And also, as has become the custom, we will go ahead and waive the reading of the warrant, which we did in the first two parts, so unless there's any objections, we will continue with that. Excellent. All right. So last week, we left off on Article 28, so we're going to go ahead and pick up there. Do we have a motion on Article 28? Oh, do you want to, okay, yeah, well, we'll go ahead and do a test. That's a good idea. So just for those who may not be familiar with the new voting system, and also just to make sure that it works, we're going to go ahead and do a test question. So the question today is, did you enjoy the weekend? Go ahead and hit yes or no on your device. Just a couple other friendly pointers that we've learned in the first two meetings is those are the only buttons you need to press. You don't need to press the button above with the little paper airplane on it, or any of the other buttons, in order to lock in your vote. As long as it says "okay" on the screen, then your vote has been recorded and registered. And that should be it. So you'll see the count up on the screen in terms of the number of voters, and then once we end the vote, you'll see how many voted yes and how many voted no. We're going to give everyone 30 seconds to vote on each item. I will let you know when 10 seconds remain, so that you can lock in your choice. You can change your choice anytime during that 30 seconds before we close the vote. So if you're undecided, you can change it as many times as you like in 30 seconds. So with that said, it looks like we've got a good number of votes in at this point, so we'll go ahead and close the vote. And there we go. So 162 people liked their weekend, 14 did not. So that's good. You know, for those 14 people, we're in the week now, so congratulations. Excellent. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started with Article 28. And do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 28, the Town Administrator By-Law Change.
All right, we have a motion and second on Article 28. Do we have any presentation on that?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to amend Article 28 to add a new Section E as written in the Amendments to Motions Amendment, addition to the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend Article 28 as written in the Amendments to Motions handout. And that's been seconded. Excellent. So on the amendment, we'll go ahead and open that for debate. Seeing no hands, no motion to the mics, or did you have something to say?
Would Town Council quickly like to update us on why we need to add the Section E?
Yeah, you're welcome to comment.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. So the reason that this article is required is that the Town Administrator bylaw, as it exists today, was approved by a vote of the state legislature, I think it was in 1995. And so, in my opinion, in order to change the form of the bylaw as it had been approved by the legislature, it requires another vote of the legislature. And so this is just a procedural requirement. If you vote in favor of the bylaw changes, as well as this amendment, then the whole package will be sent to the state legislature, and just like any other special act, the state legislature will decide whether or not the amendment will be approved.
Thank you. We have a hand. Can we get a mic to the person who raised their hand, please?
Hi, Lydia Nelson, 14 Edgewood Road, Carver. I'm wondering if five years is sort of a standard. Is that a normal kind of contractual arrangement? What if something happens and the person leaves, we're obligated to pay? Or am I misunderstanding?
So it's a great question. Right now, we have an amendment on the table to the main motion, as described by our Town Council. So the comments right now should be focused on the amendment, and then once we dispense with that-
What does that do? Because in the article, I see five years. Does the amendment do?
Want to comment on what the amendment does?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So all the amendment does is add a procedural step, which is to approve of the Select Board sending this to the legislature for approval. Once we vote on the amendment, then the rest of the article will come back up for discussion. And I think at that point, your question about the term of the Town Administrator's contract would be in order.
Yep. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so seeing no hands, no further motion to the mics on the amendment, on the amendment to Article 28, we'll go ahead and put that to a vote. This will require a majority vote, and again, we'll give you 30 seconds to go ahead and lock in your vote, and we'll go ahead and open the vote now. And close the vote. Okay, and the amendment passes by a majority vote of 151 yes and 24 no. All right, so back to the main motion on Article 28, Town Administrator By-Law Change. Ma'am, I believe that your question would be in order now, if you don't mind bringing We'll get that turned on for you in just a sec. All right, try now.
Lydia Nelson, 14 Edgewood Road, Carver. So my question had to do with the five years. Is that standard? Because it seems to me that there may be a problem if something doesn't work out and then we're still obligated contractually to pay.
So that's Part B, and what we changed things to is that the Select Board can offer a Town Administrator contract not to exceed five years. That doesn't mean that it's going to be five years.
Yeah, but why does it have to even have five years? Not to exceed five years? So what guarantee is it that, like in a normal kind of, a school principal doesn't get five years?
Well, and there's no guarantee, or even a thought, that we would offer a five-year contract.
Why has five years been offered before, then? Was it different?
I think before, it didn't state anything. It was open-ended.
And we got five years. And multiple jobs, I see. That's a really good thing. It says you have to only have that job. I think that's great, but anyway, I'm just concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, I have a little background on Article 28.
Sure.
As for folks, so Article 28 represents an attempt by the Select Board to update and clarify some parts of the Town Administrator bylaw. Part A clarifies the rules regarding the selection of a screening committee, and Part A was recommended by the Select Board, 5 to 0. Part B clarifies contract terms, as we just discussed, and that was recommended 4 to 1 by the Select Board. Part C clarifies the rules regarding the choosing of an interim Town Administrator and how they would be selected, and that was recommended 5 to 0 by the Select Board. Part D led to a little bit of discussion by the Board. It seeks to limit what other activities a person can undertake while serving as Town Administrator. A majority of the Board felt that these activities should be more clearly delineated, while a minority felt that the prior language was more appropriate and would allow the Select Board to consider items on a case-by-case basis. The minority of the Board also felt that changes to Part D may keep future applicants from applying for the Carver Town Administrator position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As one of the ones who voted for the changes in Part D, I just wanted to point out, as Mrs. Nelson did, that we got rid of the phrase that says, "The Town Administrator shall not engage in any business or occupation during such service unless such action is approved in advance by the Select Board." And we worked really hard on this section, I know I did, because we didn't want to limit a Town Administrator from doing things in his or her own town, whether as a public official there, as an elected official, appointed official, on a board or organization, a nonprofit, any of those things. But the key was that they had to do it on their own time, not on Town Hall time. So that was, that's the main difference, I think, as I see it, in Part D.
Yeah, is it, are you speaking like-
As Selectman.
As Selectman, okay.
As the other two Select Board members stated, on Part B, for me, I would have preferred a three-year contract, but we all decided that giving the latitude to the Board of Selectmen to have up to five years, and that's been kind of standard. I mean, unfortunately, in the past, we have had a contract, and then every year, it's renegotiate, renegotiate, renegotiate. And that's not right. It shouldn't be done. And we kind of discussed this. And all these changes that we put out here, we discussed this at length over the past year-plus. So I just want to let everyone know that that's the reason, and I agree with the Part D limiting Town Administrator from doing other things while they're in, working for us.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. I'm not sure who was first here. Yeah, okay.
Hi, Jennifer Pratt, 38 Mile Standish Drive. I agree that the original way that the bylaw was written, it was very vague. However, I am concerned with the proposed change to Section 3.1.1, where it says that the screening committee shall be appointed by the Select Board. The Select Board ultimately has the responsibility to choose our next Town Administrator, and I believe the purpose of a screening committee is to provide some checks and balances as the Select Board and the Town Administrator are the two most, the two entities that have the most power in town, I guess would be the best way to say it. And so I believe that if we are going to add in language about the screening committee, that we should do it right. And I want to give a nod to our current Select Board, because I think you guys got it right. I currently serve on our Town Administrator Selection Committee, and I think that the way that the five of you proposed we form a selection committee was very well-written. So I would like to propose a motion to amend that section, to strike the sentence, "The screening committee shall be appointed by the Select Board," and replace it with, "The screening committee shall consist of nine members. The composition of the committee will be one member as chosen by their respective boards, one member of the school committee, one member of the finance committee, and one member of the planning board. The Select Board shall appoint one member of the business community and three members at large, and two of the four public safety chiefs will also serve to be chosen amongst themselves." And I do have a copy of this.
Okay, sure, bring it forward, thank you. So we have a motion.
I just think that if we're going to change this motion, we should make it correct and set the precedent for any future boards, and not allow an opportunity for a future Board that may have a very specific agenda to then appoint a committee that would then affirm that agenda with no checks and balances in place. So I hope that the Select Board does not see any disrespect in this proposed amendment. I just want to say, because I'm using your exact formation, I just want to set the precedent for future boards.
So let me just, we, there was a lot of discussion about this, and I appreciate the compliment on the choosing of this year's screening committee. But one of the reasons we wanted to be careful not to specify specific members in the future is because you never know what's going to happen in the future, and you never know what might be going on with certain boards or certain things in the town. So we thought that we should leave it a little bit flexible, and that's why we didn't want to specify exactly who would comprise these screening committees. I also think, and I'll, after they consult, I may ask Town Council to speak to the inclusion of two chiefs, because we had a number of issues this year, correct me if I'm wrong, with chiefs and because of their relationship in working with the Town Administrator. There was a question as to whether there was a conflict or not.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, I believe it was decided through council that we could only appoint, excuse me, two of the public safety chiefs who were not appointed by the Town Administrator. They had to be appointed by the Select Board in order for them to be on this committee.
I just want to make sure that there's no conflicts being written into this, so.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so the issue with that is that you can't have on the screening committee an individual who is going to be appointed by the person that they're recommending, or they might be recommending be hired or not recommend be hired. That would be a conflict of interest. So to the extent that the position of Town Administrator appoints any of the other public safety chiefs, then those public safety chiefs could not serve on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Thank you.
Would it solve the issue if we changed the word from chiefs to safety representatives?
When we started talking about this, I approached the Board with the exact same type deal. I researched towns all over Massachusetts to see what did towns do with screening committees. I came in with, I don't know, guys, what, more than a dozen examples of towns and the makeups that they had, because I thought it was important to set those parameters. Let's do it. You know, the term used in our meetings was, we didn't want to bind future boards. I didn't agree with that, because precedent has to be set somewhere. So that's where I was at in the beginning. But as we talked about this throughout the year, and the screening process extended longer than we anticipated, I ended up changing my mind about laying out a specific committee until after this committee is done, and we can talk to them and find out what worked for you. Was it good to have that many members? Would you change anything about that? So I went from a defined set of people to a, let's figure out if we did it right the first time before we have to do it that way the second time. Because again, I brought in so many examples from other towns, and we weren't far off the majority of them. But that's why I switched from that to this, because I think it's important to get feedback from the current committee to see how it went, because this is new to us. That's why I did it.
You, Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Sure.
I can appreciate that. As I said, as a current member serving in the committee, I think it has gone well, although I cannot speak for the committee, I can only speak for myself as a member. I just can't support the article changes written, because to just say that the Select Board will appoint the screening committee, period, I think leaves too much power to the Select Board and not enough definition. So I can't support the changes in total without revising that somehow or striking that sentence.
Okay, through you, Mr. Moderator. So the issue that we're having with the language here, it says that two of the four public safety chiefs to be chosen amongst themselves, but it's my understanding that the police chief and fire chief are appointed by the Select Board, the EMS chief and the emergency management chiefs are appointed by the Town Administrator. And so that would then exclude them from being able to be appointed, and so this provision really couldn't be carried out as written. In addition, the moderator has pointed out that it states that one of the Select Board appointees is a, should be a member of the business community, but it doesn't say of what business community. Presumably, it would be Carver, but it wouldn't be limited to that, in my opinion, if it's not stated. And then the terms, three members at large, is not particularly clear, is it?
Yep, yeah, that's correct. And also, the business community statement doesn't make reference to whether or not that person should be a resident, so would they just have to be a member of the business community, or do they also have to be a resident?
So I can modify my amendment to the motion to say, one member of the Carver's business community, meaning a Carver business owner, and three members at large to be Carver citizens. Anyone, any citizen of Carver could apply to be appointed to this committee.
And would the business owner have to be a resident of Carver or a voter?
I don't have a preference to that. I don't have an opinion on that. I would think anybody who's operating a business in the town of Carver would have interest in who the Town Administrator is making rules that their business has to comply with, but if somebody else has a strong opinion and wants to weigh in, I'm happy to amend the motion again.
Okay.
I guess, yes, you'd have to be a Carver resident to serve on this Board.
Carver business owner and resident. Okay, so I'm going to read it as we understand it here. So, "Strike, 'The screening committee shall be appointed by the Select Board,' and replace with, 'The screening committee shall consist of nine members. The composition of the committee will be one member as chosen by the representative Board, one member of the school committee, one member of the finance committee, one member of the planning board, and to be appointed by the Select Board, one member of the business community who is a Carver business owner and resident, three members at large to be appointed by the Select Board who are Carver residents, two of the four..." Oh, and then we're going to strike the, what are we going to do with the public safety chiefs?
I would just change it to say, you know, "Two public safety representatives to be chosen amongst themselves."
But if we say, "Public safety representatives," that could include a chief. So would we say, "Two public safety representatives who are not chiefs"?
Yeah, or just "Two public safety representatives who are not directly appointed And if I may, Mr. Moderator, I think if the business community, if we're specifying that it's a Carver resident, then I don't think it necessarily needs to be an owner, but, you know, like, our current representative for the business community, I don't think they're a direct owner, but they're like a stakeholder or shareholder of the entity. So I just, I think it's important that the businesses in town have a voice in this process, because the Town Administrator has a lot of power over a lot of different things, and I just think that it's equitable to make sure that everybody in town with vested interests has the opportunity to be represented. And so if we're going to change the bylaw, we should make it clear.
So a Carver business stakeholder and resident?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we got this sorted out, so I'm going to read it again, just to make sure that we have it completely clear, right? So, "Strike, 'The screening committee shall be appointed by the Select Board,' and replace with, 'The screening committee shall consist of nine members. The composition of the committee will be one member as chosen by the representative Board, one member of the school committee, one member of the finance committee, one member of the planning board, and to be appointed by the Select Board, one member of the business community who is a Carver business stakeholder and resident, three members at large to be appointed by the Select Board who are Carver residents, two public safety representatives who are not appointed by the Town Administrator.'" Excellent. All right, so we have a motion on that. Can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on this item. We'll go ahead and open it up for debate. Yep, Mr. Bellman.
When you say, "Emergency services," does that include if the chiefs don't want to do it, then they can pick if it's a police officer, or a dispatcher, or a firefighter, or they get to pick, I just want to make it clear, that it can be a union member, non-union member, or anything.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say, yes, anybody who represents our safety, you know, like if Chief Weston didn't want to serve and he wanted one of his deputy fire chiefs to serve, then that would be fine. I don't think the whole point is just to make sure, like, our safety services, fire, police, EMS, I mean, they all have very, you know, strong interest in who the Town Administrator is, because they work closely with this. I mean, the Town Administrator manages everything from the budgets and everything, so I think all-important parties should be, have the opportunity to be fairly representative when they're choosing a screening committee.
Just one follow-up.
Yep.
Does that employee have to be a resident of Carver?
Go ahead.
You, Mr. Moderator, yes, all members of the screening committee need to be residents of Carver.
be residents of Carver.
Uh, it also occurs to me that we're not completely clear about who's going to choose these two public safety representatives.
So the motion said for them to be chosen amongst themselves.
Okay. That could be complicated. Just throwing that out there.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I suppose we could amend it to say that the respective chiefs, you know, have, but then there's the issue there. So I don't know, somebody else has a proposition on how to amend it. I mean, we made it work this time around, so.
Okay. So just for clarity on the public safety representatives, it currently stands as two public safety representatives who are not appointed by the town administrator who are residents of Carver to be chosen amongst themselves, so.
I'll amend that to say to be appointed by the select board as well.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and, um, and just make it clear that, that we're editing the last item about the two public safety representatives to say two public safety representatives who are not appointed by the town administrator who are appointed by the select board. Or who, who will be appointed by the select board. Okay, uh, so we will have further debate, yeah.
Allen Maynard, 148 Plymouth Street. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I rise unfortunately to oppose this amendment. Um, I give Ms. Pratt a great deal of credit for the work done and the thought that went into this in drafting this amendment and the care that went into it and continues to apparently go into it because it's been self amended twice before we even had the first discussion on it. Um, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV, but there is some principles in the law. You know, there's the old hard cases make bad law, but I have friends who are lawyers who told me that the worst thing a law can be is too vague, the next thing it can be is too narrow, and the third thing it can be is too abstruse. And unfortunately, as concocted at the end of the process, I think this amendment is all of the above. I think we would benefit from a good process, a well-defined process for appointing a screening committee, but I don't think this is it. It just seems to have too many angles and twists and turns and are we members of the town committee or members of the community but not residents or voters? What are we? You know, it's, it's going to take, what defines someone as a member of the business committed, community? If I own a business and have a manager running it, am I part of the business community or is it the guy who does the work every day? You know, all this, this, someone's vagueness in it in an attempt to be explicit. And I think that we probably can go with something better, given some time. In the meantime, you know, we have good people and bad people, every town does, that serve from time to time. And I think we, until we have something that's more explicit and better and more workable, we just have to trust the people who are on the select board to do the best job they can and learn from this and maybe come back with something better. May I make a, a minor point as well on the original, um, as drafted, um, question that's not a matter of controversy or contention, simply editorial. It mentions screening committee in the second sentence and search committee further on down. Are they separate committees or is it, is it colloquialism to say search committee means screening committee or is that just a, an editorial mistake?
Yeah, you're asking about the main motion, so I'll invite you to come back up and ask about that when we come back.
Hope my editor has had it on later. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Yep, next.
My name is Deborah Giswaldo, 204 Main Street. Um, I do agree with this amendment that's been presented. However, we are sending this off to the state and I would like it to say among instead of amongst, that would be appropriate language. So sorry, once a teacher, always a teacher. Thank you.
I don't believe that that part is still in play. So, um, it was originally to be chosen among or amongst themselves, uh, but it is now to be appointed by the select board. The two public safety representatives. Is that what you were referring to was the, the statement about? Are, are, are you talking about outside of the amendment?
Okay, so all I want is wherever it says amongst, it should say among. If you're not going to put amongst, then we, this is moot. Um, but I do speak in favor of this amendment, of this amendment, as long as it says among and not amongst. That's it.
Okay, it doesn't say either at this point, okay. All right, seeing no hands, no further motion. Yep.
Just, uh, one other quick, um, comment. When we first did this, I was one of the ones that didn't want to restrict this because we wanted to let the future boards decide what should make up the screening committee. And one of the issues that we haven't touched on is town employees. Uh, that was a sticking point for us, um, as far as the at-large members and that wasn't addressed in this. So again, just want to point that out, that that was one of the issues that we brought up a few times was not to have town employees as part of the screening committee because they would fall under the town administrator. So I wanted to bring that up during, before we ended this amendment.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, if you, if you're not going to be speaking as a member of your board, then please use the mic on the aisle. Thank you.
It's okay, I need to get my steps in anyway. Um, through you, Mr. Moderator, um, I believe that's addressed, Mr. Hoffman, because the three members at large will be appointed by the select board. So whomever applies, the select board could make the decision to not appoint town employees for the conflict of interest that you just stated. So that should be self governed under this amendment.
Thank you.
But if it's not stated, can they still do that? A future board do that?
Yeah, I would assume so, yeah. So, so basically what you're trying to say is, is that, uh, yes, it could be up to your discretion as to, as to not, uh, appointing someone, uh, who is a town employee, uh, but a future administration could have, could think otherwise, right? So.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. This is, this is due to this comment. I want to say that I believe that's covered under the ethics training that everyone in the state has to take, or town whoever works here, and understand that conflicts of interests are already dealt with upfront. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, seeing no hands and no further motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. Uh, this does require a majority vote. On the amendment to Article 28, the town administrator bylaw change, I'm just going to read it again just so that everybody's super clear on this, um, and then I'll just sort of explain what a yes and no vote is. So, um, the amendment is to "Strike: The screening committee shall be appointed by the select board and replaced with: The screening committee shall consist of nine members. The composition of the committee will be one member as chosen by the select, the representative board, one member of the school committee, one member of the finance committee, one member of the planning board, and to be appointed by the select board, one member of the business community who is a Carver business stakeholder and resident, three members at large to be appointed by the select board who are Carver residents, two public safety representatives who are not appointed by the town administrator who will be appointed by the select board." Uh, a yes vote would place this language, uh, into the article, uh, in place of the language that is being struck. A no vote would keep the article as written in the warrant. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and open the vote. Ten seconds. And we'll close the vote. Okay, uh, the amendment passes by a majority vote of 130 yes and 69 no.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's through you, um, to the town clerk, can we just have, um, what I see as three typographical errors corrected for the record? Um, specifically in Part A, the section reference instead of being 3.1, .1, .1 should be 3.3, .1, .1. Likewise, in Part B, the reference should be 3.3, .1, .2. And in Part A, um, the reference to search committee should be screening committee.
Thank you. All right, so we're back to, um, the main article as we just amended it. Uh, so we'll go ahead and open that for debate. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bendexer 149 High Street here in Carver. Um, we just spent probably 15, 20 minutes talking about the selection committee and how it's going to be composed. As written, I would vote for this article currently, however, I do have a concern as far as Part C. So whenever the town administrator, uh, office of town administrator is vacant or about to become vacant, the select board may appoint an interim town administrator for an initial period not to exceed six months. The select board may then appoint an interim town administrator for successive periods as they be necessary. The appointment of an interim town administrator is not subject to the screening committee requirement as set forth. So I, I understand why, you know, you wouldn't have the screening committee for an interim TA. However, my concern is that we could essentially wind up with a successive number of six-month appointments to the point where we're bypassing the screening committee altogether. If a member of the select, select board would like to speak on that, I'd be happy to hear it. Um, otherwise I have nothing further on that.
Sure, thank you, sir.
I guess all I can say on that is it, it's not the intent of, of the select board to appoint successive interim town administrators. Uh, the concern among the select board was to, first of all, standardize an initial period. That's where the six months came from. And as, as happened this year, we didn't have a, a permanent town administrator after six months. So we needed to, if that was in place, we needed to have something else to keep going. So that's why this initial, this subsequent language is there. So if we need to appoint someone for another month or two months or three months, we can, we can do that. We didn't want to be bound to appoint someone for another six months if that wasn't necessary. So we felt that that other language, so we could appoint someone for a shorter time period if necessary after the six months would be appropriate. Uh, it's not our, not our intention to keep appointing interim town administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
May I, may I?
You have a follow-up question.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, was there any discussion about limiting that clause, uh, such as after six months, that it shouldn't be the same person that's reappointed or anything like that to make sure that we're keeping in the spirit with what we've, what we set forth in Part A?
Mr. Townsend.
Uh, I, I don't recall any discussion to that effect, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Belbin.
Now, we saw that before, um, with the prior town administrator, we hired for two and a half years, all right, um, or actually a year and a half, sorry, year and a half. And I really didn't think that was right. I mean, we need to turn around and have something. This is something that kind of limits us to say, okay, six months, we better get a screening committee immediately, get them into work, and hopefully have it done within six months. But they can't get it done within sex, six months. We don't want to turn around and say, all right, we're only going to get two candidates that's going to come before the board of selectmen, which I don't think is fair. And that's what we got. All right? So giving them, the screening committee, enough time to go through the process, and that's what the six month is. And if we, they're not finished, they're going to tell us within four months or whatever, and we can negotiate with that interim and say, hey, can you stay on for a couple of extra months with us? All right, just until the screening committee done. And that's, that is the intent, is just to turn around and let the screening committee do their job, all right, and that we don't get locked into a certain timeframe of how long it's going to be. So six months is a good time. If we have to go a couple of months later, then that's okay, but no more than a year should go through. Um, that's our intent and it's clear, hopefully.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Um, the, I think the main thing for me when we brought this up was to have a limit, that it had to be only six months because the discussion was, what is an interim? Is 18 months truly an interim as we had in the past? To me, that felt like a short-term contract, not so much an interim. So the crux of this to me was the six months. You're hiring an interim for six months. And like they said, maybe you need a little extra, but in my opinion, an interim is not someone who has a contract of a year or a year and a half or more just from the outset. So the big part was limiting the initial hiring period.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Okay, seeing no hands, no further motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and vote on Article 28, the town administrator bylaw change. The select board already indicated their votes for recommendations. This does require a majority vote. A yes vote would, uh, edit as written in the warrant and as amended in the previous amendment. Uh, a no vote would make no change. Um, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the vote. Ten seconds. And we'll close the vote. Article 28, Town Administrator Bylaw Change passes with a majority vote of 166 yes and 28 no. All right, moving on to Article 29, Yard Sale Bylaw Change.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 29 as set forth on the warrant.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded on Article 29. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it for debate. Mr. Belbin.
Yeah, this is one of mine. Um, we have yard sales, it's been regulated, but nobody follows it. Um, we're not going after people for it. It's kind of a waste, uh, to actually have it in our bylaws. So everyone, have your yard sale the way you want it.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. All right, seeing no hands, no further motion to the mics, uh, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. Uh, the recommendation by the select board, uh, was three to two, and it does require a majority vote. Uh, and with that, we'll go ahead and open the vote. Ten seconds. And we'll close the vote. So on Article 29, Yard Sale Bylaw Change, it passes by a majority vote of 161 yes and 27 no. All right, Article 30, we took out of order and dispensed with in our first evening. We didn't?
We didn't.
No, the, the motion failed.
Oh, it did, okay, sorry.
It failed one, it failed 98 to 170, 92 to 178.
Okay. All right, so, uh, do we have a motion on Article 30?
Make a motion, we have it as written.
Okay. Motion's been made in the second on Article 30. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it for debate. Mr. Belbin.
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. I'm also the chairman of the Waste District. Uh, thank you very much. I was going to pull this and not do it, but I was asked to continue on. The district was created in 1970s, the agreement we've been doing following was since the 1970s. Uh, it started to be changed.
It started to be changed a number of years ago. It never got passed. And we're at the point now that we've created a new agreement between Wareham and Carver. It used to be Marion. Marion walked away from it, thus allowing Carver and Wareham to run the transfer station. Disagreement, has it, we don't have it posted up there? Okay. Nothing on the screen, all right. Sorry. All right, so I'm going to go through it really quickly, all right? The first section is composition, three members, all right, from each town. Vacancies, vacancies will be done. Someone leaves, we need to get somebody else. It's up to the Board of Selectmen to pick who they're going to have. Organization is pretty standard. Powers and duties, it gives us certain laws that require the district to go ahead and follow. And that's what we're going to do. The quorum, it's got to be at least a majority. We are considered Carver-Marion Regional Refuge Disposal District, all right? We do have a disposal facility, that's the transfer station. That's one of our, that one facility, somewhere around $300,000 to $500,000, that's what it's kind of worth. The next one is under terms of payment. That's how we split up if there's any money left over. We have about $1.2 million in the bank right now. We've got to cover that for the next 25 years. All right? We need to protect that money. It was already stolen from us before. We can't let it happen again. So if there's any money left over, it's going to be split up between Carver and Wareham, all right? And through the percentage. If the town needs to, if the district needs money, we go to the town and we say, hey, we need money, you have to give it to us. There's no choice about it. They have to do it. They have to support the district. All right? We do, we have a budget we've been doing, following it pretty closely. And our operating budget has been decreased drastically because we don't pay a lot out anymore. We've tried to move everything around. We have a stabilization account, a count we created, and that's going to be further along hopefully with the help of another organization to do our OPED liabilities. Long-term financial planning, what we've done is we've elicited our, Tom O'Brien, to help us along to see what we can do with our money for the best investments of the town, of the district, which will help the towns. It's limited agreement. This is, the next one is procedure. This is important for you to know. In order for us to take any changes, like we have to come to town meeting of these bylaws, well, we kind of were hoping we could bypass town meeting to change our bylaws if they ever do need to be changed and just go to the Board of Selectmen. Okay? That's a big change. I want you guys to be aware of it. Nothing hidden here. All right? The fiscal year is the fiscal year. Incurring debt. The district does have the ability to incur debt. We have nothing to incur debt on unless something happens at the South Carver landfill. If something happens there, if it, any contamination, then we have insurance policies to cover us. But if our insurance policies isn't enough, then we're going to have to pay for it. We have to pay for it some way, and it comes back to us as taxpayers here in Carver and Wareham, and also Marion, because the agreement we had when they left, if there's any debt, any liabilities, they got to turn around and help us with it. So that's a good thing. All right? The next one is the land surface. We've got rid of a lot of property we've already have for equipment, all right? But we still have the land at the transfer station, which, like I said, in between $300,000 to $500,000 right now, just my estimate. But that's it. This agreement is new. It allows us to do what we have to do and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Okay, any further debate? Okay, seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put Article 30, Carver-Marion-Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District Agreement, to a vote. It requires a majority vote. The Select Board recommended five to zero. And we will go ahead and open the vote. And close the vote. Okay, Article 30 passes by a majority vote of 157 yes and 29 no.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Article 31 in the petition articles. Do we have a motion?
Okay, seeing no motion. I moved that the town not approve Article 31 as set forth in the warrant. Can we do that?
Yeah, that's doable. We have a motion made in second to not approve Article 31 as written in the warrant. Any explanation or debate?
Yes, Bruce Mackey, 9 Thatcher Street, Planning Board Chair. I just, I guess this was brought to the Planning Board from a marijuana company, and they wanted a lot that was outside, in North Carver, that was outside the overlay district. So we went over this with Tom Bott, our interim town planner. And the Planning Board, we looked at this, and we felt it was sort of like a spot zoning issue where this particular lot wasn't near the overlay district. So the Planning Board does not recommend favorable action on Article 31, and it was by a 5-0 vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't a, these are petition articles. Isn't someone from the petition supposed to come forward?
I don't know, I don't know that they have to make the motion. It's on, it's on the warrant, so we can take up the business because it is on the warrant, Another point of order, yeah.
The motion was not approved, would a yes vote saying no?
Yeah, so a yes vote would not approve Article 31, essentially dispensing with it, so that we wouldn't take up any further action on it.
Very difficult to do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll remind everybody before the vote.
If I could just add that nobody came to the hearing at the Planning Board either. I believe this is a company that's outside of Carver.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Appreciate that. Okay, seeing no hands and no further motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So, okay, as a reminder, a yes vote would essentially not approve Article 31 and dispense with it so that we would take no further action on it. A no vote would, would that approve Article 31? No, it would just, it would just do nothing with it, right? Yeah. So a no vote would basically do nothing with it. But a yes vote is a more active notion, saying, I do not want this, this article to be approved. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the vote. And we'll close the vote. Okay, by two-thirds of a majority, the motion passes by 156 yes and 39 no. All right, moving on to Article 32, we have a motion.
Moderator, point of order, Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. Since nobody has moved that motion, am I allowed to make a motion?
Uh, yeah.
I'd like to move that we dissolve town meeting.
A motion to dissolve town meeting would not be in order until we've taken up all the business on the warrant. It's in the bylaws.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this article. It's about time we started to change the faces that we see every year up here and get some new people in. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded on Article 32. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. I believe he was moving first, so, yeah.
Ding.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary LeBoa, 8 Lincoln Circle. I've always been very opposed to term limits at any level for some very basic reasons. Number one, if you, if it's an elected position that you're talking about, you already have term limits. They're called elections. If somebody in an elected position isn't serving in the best interest of whatever the body of people that they serve, then you have the opportunity to step up and run for an office, gather enough support, run it at the election, win, and take over. It's that easy. If it's an appointed position, then those positions are appointed by elected officials. And if you have a problem with that appointed person, then you need to take it up with the elected official who was the appointing body for that position. Secondly, I think that over the years, and I've served in public before, people who bring these articles forward for term limits are typically bringing them forward for either personal reasons, or vendetta, or somebody ruled on something that they didn't like, and they want to get that person out. They don't know who's going to take their place. They don't know if somebody's going to step up and do the right thing and run for that position. They just want that person out. And finally, I think you stand more of a risk of losing good people than you do of getting rid of somebody that you're looking to get rid of. And I'll spare you from saying this six times, but I feel the same on Article, all the way down to Article 37.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. My problem with this, and I'll just stick to this article, even though it is reflective of others, this is a very targeted by-law amendment. You'll notice that there are a lot of committees that weren't even mentioned. And I agree with the previous speaker. Something like this is not motivated necessarily for the good of the town, as opposed to, we don't like what's happened by this one committee, so we want to go ahead and change it. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the chairman of the Select Board, or anybody that can answer this up there, how often, how many positions do we have open on boards right now?
Mr. Townsend.
Give me one second, and I will let you know. Mr. Moderator, would you like me to read the list of openings on boards of committees in full?
He just asked how many were open in general.
All right, we have, let's see, one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. I believe we have 13.
All right.
To best of my knowledge, it's 13.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to continue briefly, while I still have part of my three minutes left.
Sure.
Basically, I've, a lot of us have been around town a long time. I think it's the wrong-headed thing to do to stop people who are willing to put the time forward. I know it's been said in social media, well, if we put the term limits in, lots of people will go ahead and apply. I don't believe it. And I will challenge anybody that votes in favor of this article or any of them, that I fully expect you to go out tomorrow and flood the Select Board office with your applications to be part of these committees.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Moderator, I have to echo what Mr. Dunham just said. I've been in town a long time. I've been very involved in town politics for that period of time. And I can tell you that I have not seen a huge line of people waiting to become members of other committees. I've seen, I've seen more and more of the committees aging as opposed to finding all sorts of new members. And I therefore think that trying to do term limits is, would be counterproductive for the town. And that's true for all of 30, 32 through 37.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Yes, sir.
Bendexer 149 High Street. I have to echo the sentiments of the people who've spoken before me. I mean, there are great, I think there are good philosophical reasons and good practical reasons as to why this and the subsequent articles that are similar are a bad idea. I also think that in the last town election, to note, we had 1,037 voters who had the choice to pick whoever they wanted. And 195 of us tonight are going to limit them for the future? That, to me, just doesn't seem like good government. If we're going to limit what people can do with the ballot, then we should be doing that at the ballot. I don't think town meeting is the proper forum for that. So even if you disagree with me, I would urge you to say, if you really want term limits, put it to the voters so they can vote in a ballot box at town election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Alan, 148 8 Plumb Street. Moderator, I'm not unmindful of the arguments on either side. Personally, I'll state my belief. I do believe there's some place for term limits. I don't think this particular amendment, this particular article, I should say, and again, the comment of the ones following it, addresses a concern in an appropriate fashion amongst my questions. What happens after someone is term limited after two terms? They're not allowed to succeed themselves. Are they forever barred? If I am somehow the best member of some committee ever, and I step down after two terms, 10 years from now, if things are being run over a cliff and they say, Al, buddy, come back and serve, sorry, I can't. You know, burnt out at the age of 30, or in my case, 55. You know, it's a serious question. There are ways to ensure some rotation without simply foreclosing somebody's ability. Basically, it's not quite a bill of attainder, but it is like, you may never, ever, ever serve on the Select Board again. And I, you know, I do agree that we need variety, it's rotation. We also need some continuity. We need to take advantage of the experience of people who have it and are willing to share it. And if we want to accomplish, I think it's a better way to do it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if we can comment on the ability for someone to run again. I mean, there definitely is a statement here saying, this provision will be effective immediately upon town vote, and anyone currently serving with two or more terms cannot be reappointed. So I don't know if that would bind us to not reappoint that person indefinitely, or if they would be able to serve another term at another time. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, we have no comment on that, so. So we can't answer that, but thank you for asking.
Matt Kenniston, 9 Center Street. I just want to echo the sentiments of those who came before me to speak against this article here. I also want to take note of the comment that was made, that people are sick of seeing the same faces up here. And I think the reason we see these same faces up here is these people probably spend more time out of their lives than most people think about anything going on in town. And I just think that that sentiment was unwarranted, and I appreciate all the fine work that all of you do out there and the time that you spend helping our town run, so thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yes, in the middle.
Brenda Bacall, 24 Kennedy Drive. My feeling on this is it takes away my right. My right to vote for who I want to vote for, my right to volunteer if I want to volunteer. Term limits, like somebody said before, the election is what determines it. But if there's term limits and there's somebody in a seat that's doing a great job that I want to vote again for, I can't. for, I can't. You're taking away my right to vote. If that person wants to volunteer and they can't because of a term limit, then you're taking away their right to volunteer. I just think term limits don't work. Elections are what you want the people to come out for, and you want people to continue to want to volunteer.
Okay, and just to be clear, this Article 32, we're talking about an appointed position, so this person would not be voted in, but appointed. Yep, on the left.
Mr. Moderator, Donna Faran, 278 South Meadow Village. I just wanted to say that I tested the waters on this. So in January 2021, I resigned from the Fence Viewer and the Commission on Disability, and I did it because I had heard one of our selectmen say that they wanted to limit people's ability to sit on the committees for more than a certain amount of time. So I did resign. Both of those positions are currently open, and they've never been filled, so there you go.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Stephen Gray, former chairman of the Governance Committee for the Town of Carver. For those of you who may not recall, the Governance Committee was a subcommittee of the Select Board, and we met biweekly, or roughly two years. The charge of the Governance Committee was to come up with recommendations that the Select Board could consider to improve the governance and the efficiency of the town in terms of its policies and prerogatives. During this two-year time span, ladies and gentlemen, we came up with approximately 36 recommendations. Virtually every single one of them adopted by the Select Board, and these recommendations, we believe, brought the Town of Carver into the 21st century in terms of how it is now operating versus how it was operating for generations before. Among its recommendations were things such as changing the treasurer tax collector position from elected to appointed, so as to professionalize that office, to adopt a...
I'm trying to see where he's going here, so I...
And to adopt a remote participation policy and many others. During the course of our many meetings, we had extensive discussions about term limits. This was not a new topic then. It's not a new topic now. This topic came before town meeting and was discussed three or four years ago and was voted down then. Now, we believed at the Governance Committee that imposing term limits would have a devastating effect, in that it would depopulate existing boards and committees that conduct the business of this town. Many folks would be removed from their boards and committees, depriving them of quorums required legally for them to do the business of town. And why? Their crime justifying removal? Because they were experienced. For those of you attending tonight, I want you to know that this is not an anti-term limits rant. Term limits may, in fact, be a good idea on the state or federal level, where candidates can be recruited fairly easily. But here locally, the Governance Committee found that boards and committees were already shorthanded, and you've heard that already again tonight. There are many vacancies existing. So wrapping up, I think that we all know that it's difficult to find people locally who are willing to serve in either elected or appointed positions. For instance, with the election this Saturday, there are 10 races, only two of which are contested. This should not be a surprise to anyone. We all live busy lives. Maybe we don't want to be involved in the governance of this town because of that, but also, we know as well that the political tone in this town can often be harsh and unpleasant, and this can discourage people. So, concluding, this petition article, ladies and gentlemen, is wrong-headed and ill-advised in the extreme, and I ask that you please vote against this article.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Belvin.
So, Robert Bell with 26th Gate Street. I'm for term limits, okay, for certain positions in town. As being one person that was ostracized from this town by town administrators, where I applied for positions within this town and were denied, just because who I am, and when I asked why, wouldn't tell me, but those positions still came big in, instead of hiring me to go in there and, and serve our town. So, I think that this was an attempt to, in just my opinion, that there were some issues people perceive with the committee, and we need to do our jobs for the town, but you have to weigh the sense of, do you want somebody in that position forever? Is it a forever position until you want to leave that position? Is that right?
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Ms. Hewens? Oh, I'm sorry, were you next? Yeah.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plummett Street. These petition articles were brought forth because there are a lot of, there are a lot of the same people on, on these boards and committees, and I understand with the, with the elections, and I can fully get behind that, but the ones where they are appointed, they don't even come up, we don't even hear about it. They are just reappointed year after year after year, and I don't think that a lot of decisions are being made in the best interest of the, the rest of the community. It's, it's constant. I mean, even the Earth Committee removal isn't even, it's not even set up the correct way. I have it right here. There's supposed to be three members of the Select Board on it. Are they, anything that they've done, there's, there's no oversight on anything. Anything that they've done, if the board isn't made up correctly, is it even, is it even legal? We need new people. We need to know that when, especially these appointed positions, when people are, when their time is up, that it's going to go out and people can apply for them. I've never seen anything come up for the Earth Removal Committee. I've never seen anything come up for finance, and I do volunteer my time for this town.
Thank you. All right, so I'm just going to make a quick comment here. We've heard several arguments for, we've heard several arguments against, we've heard really thoughtful opinions and statements, so let's try to focus on new information, on any additional commentary. Just strictly coming up and saying, "I'm for it," or "I'm against it," would not be new information, and we would, we would use our vote to, to voice that, right? So let's just try to focus on any new information. Thank you, Ms. Hewens.
Thank you, Sarah Hewens, 52 Forest Street. First of all, real quickly to the previous speaker, our Select Board Chair, every time we meet announces that there are openings on many committees, directs the town to our website, and all the openings are listed there, so people are free to go and look at those. But the primary thing that I did want to say was that I know that we have a lot of trouble getting volunteers for various boards, committees, and commissions, and, but the main thing that I'm not sure has been brought up here tonight is why would we want to get rid of the institutional knowledge that some of these people bring to us? I know when I served on the Planning Board, it took me a year and a half. Thank goodness it was a five-year term, because it's a huge learning curve. So, even for these appointed positions, not a lot of people are coming forward, and we should value those that have been with us for a while, because they, they're just volunteering their time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. On the right, yep.
Nancy Ryan, 3 President's Way. This was brought up a few years ago, I think by the Select Board. At that time, we had over, I believe, around 100 committees and boards, and they narrowed it down to 67. Do we really need all these committees and boards in town, and if we could narrow them down, perhaps we'd have more people to sit on fewer boards and committees?
Mr. Moderator, that's not really...
It's not really relevant to the conversation, but... Yes. All right.
Hold a question.
Uh, seeing no hands and no further motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. This, on Article 32, to enact a two-year, sorry, two-term limit on the Earth Removal Committee. This requires a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And we'll close the vote. Okay, and on Article 32, it does not pass by majority vote with 59 yes and 150 no.
Mr. Moderator, to you, before you take a motion under Article 33, I would like to advise you that under Chapter 40A, Section 12, a zoning board of appeals has to be established by the town through its zoning bylaws, and in the Town of Carver, the Zoning Board of Appeals is established in the, in the zoning bylaw under Section 5200. Therefore, Mr. Moderator, through you to the Chair of the Planning Board, I would ask if a public hearing has been held on this article, because it is a de facto zoning bylaw amendment, and if no Planning Board public hearing has been held, then I would recommend that you rule this out of order.
Okay. So are we able to answer that?
No, this was Bruce Mackey, 9 Thatcher Street, and currently the Chair of the Planning Board. This was never brought up to the Planning Board. It's the first time, you know, I've seen it.
Okay, so hearing that and the advice of Town Council, it seems as though this article would be out of order. So we will not take a motion on this one?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. As to Article 34, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 43B, Section 13, the authority of the town to establish terms of office for elected officers is limited, and in particular, that section of the general laws prohibits the town from enacting a bylaw that imposes limits on elected positions of, to the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board in this case. I would therefore recommend that you rule this article out of order as well.
Okay, seeing that, I will also say that Article 34 is out of order. Moving on to Article 35. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion for the, to approve Article 35.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Article 35 as written in the warrant. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. Mr. Dunham.
Mr. Moderator, Alan Dunham, 11 R. Card Street, through you to the Chairman of the Finance Committee. Does the Finance Committee currently have a full membership?
We have three open.
Over the past, how, how many years has the chairman been part of the Finance Committee?
My second term.
During that whole time, how many years have we actually had full membership in the Finance Committee?
Did pretty good. The first year, when I joined, we had four. Got up to 11 a little while, and recently, we've dropped back down to nine. There's nobody breaking the door down.
That was going to be my point. We're not seeing, we're having a hard time getting a full membership of the Finance Committee, which is an extremely important committee on this, in the town government, and it goes well beyond the years before Mr. Jermaine got on the Finance Committee. We have always had two, three, four, five vacancies. There were times when there might have been even more. To go ahead and put term limits on people that are willing to serve on a very hard committee, because they have to put in a lot of time, I think is a case of, you know, biting your nose to spite your face. I think it's ill-conceived and not thought out properly, so I would urge the body to vote against this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunham. I will state that during the previous Article 32, we heard a lot of debate that was regarding term limits in general. So, we've heard a lot of opinions and points on term limits in general on either side of the, the argument there, so I want to try to keep the focus on Article 35 and the merits of imposing a term limit on this particular position. So if you are for or against term limits in general, we've heard those opinions, and, and we're going to politely ask you to give way to other folks who have comments about this specific position. Yes.
Liz Taylor, 31 Russell Truffant. I just want to, one, appreciate everybody coming out today to make a quorum, but, two, I think we've all made the points, how we all feel. Can we just vote? Can we just, on the next couple of articles, let's vote? The next, the, the following one is a redundant. Like, we can wrap this up in 15 minutes if we all just sit down and vote.
All right. Yep. Please allow me to take care of that. So I, you, you heard what I've said, right? And just coming up here to say that takes time, so I'm going to make sure that we only talk about any comments with regards to this specific position. So I think, over here was next?
So, for the Finance Committee, term limits are already set, and a maximum to four terms, which would be 12 years. We're just asking for it to be cut in half to six years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jermaine.
Helen Jermaine, 24 Pine. I'm also the chairman of the Finance Committee. You know, we make these bylaw changes, and we don't think about faces. So let me put some faces on this bylaw change. Beth Solger is the Finance Director for Sochaux Hospital. Now, I'm willing to bet that that's not a job the average guy can just go in and apply for and get tomorrow morning. Yet Beth gives her time, and a lot of her time, she also chairs the Capital Outlay Committee. We say goodbye to Beth if this passes after this current term, when she's done. We say, "Thanks for the memories. Did a great job. Get out." We say it to me. We say it to Adam Holmes. We say it to a few other members of FinCon. We spend a lot of time working with the numbers. Now, this is a hit job. This petition is nothing more than a hit job, and it's directed at me, and everybody knows it. Everybody knows it!
Mr. Jermaine.
So, my guest, hold your conscience.
Yep. All right. We should not be making assumptions about the... Well... Okay. Sir.
I believe the less exciting speaker who just preceded, Mr. Jermaine, made a mistake, that there were already term limits on the FinCon. It's a question of taking a hiatus from the FinCon before coming back. That's one thing. Another thing I'd like people to notice, that in all of these articles, which have the same source, a severe lack of knowledge about Mass State law, history of Carver, institutional knowledge. So maybe a little additional study would be in order before coming forth with something like this.
All right. Thank you. All right, seeing no hands and no further motion to the mic, we will go ahead and take a vote on Article 35. This would require a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the vote. This would require a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And we'll close the vote. Okay, and Article 35 does not pass by a majority vote of 43 yes and 164 no. Thank you. Moving on to Article 36, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to withdraw because it's an elected position. And I'll also make a motion, can I make a motion for 37, too?
Wait, I'm sorry. What was, what was the motion on 36?
Withdraw because it's an elected position, and I had said earlier that I would concede to that.
All right, so the motion would be to indefinitely postpone.
Okay.
We have a second on Article 36.
Again.
A motion made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 36. It is, it is debatable. We'll go ahead and open that for debate.
Other question.
Seeing no motion on the mic and no hands raised, this does require a majority vote. Go ahead and open the vote as soon as we have it available. Yep. We haven't opened the vote yet. We're just, we're going to get the question on the screen, sorry. Okay, so the motion is to indefinitely postpone Article 36. A yes vote would indefinitely postpone the article, a no vote would not indefinitely postpone the article, and it would be, be able to be brought up again before the end of the meeting. So we'll go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And close the vote. Okay, so the motion passes by a majority of 187 yes and 21 no, so we will indefinitely postpone Article 36. Moving on to Article 37.
Dan Frinney, Fosdick Road. Make a motion to permanently remove Article 37.
Okay, so we have a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 37. Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any debate? Seeing no hands raised and no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote as soon as we get up on the screen. Okay, on Article 37, a yes vote would indefinitely postpone Article 37, a no vote would not indefinitely postpone Article 37, and it could be brought up again before the end of the meeting. We'll go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And close the vote. All right, the motion carries by a majority vote with 186 yes and 11 no, so we will be indefinitely postponing Article 37. Article 38, we dispensed with on the first evening. So moving on to Article 39.
I move the town not approve Article 39 as set forth in the warrant.
Could we just use the indefinitely postpone method that we've just used on the previous two?
That's good for me. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 39. Do we have any debate?
I'd just like to say the Planning Board does not recommend favorable action on Article 39, 5-0, and that's because the SOLA issue was already covered under Article 26, which we voted at the last meeting.
Thank you. All right, seeing no hands raised and no motion to the mics, we will go ahead and put this to a vote as soon as we get it up on the screen for you. Okay, a yes vote would indefinitely postpone Article 39, and no vote would not indefinitely postpone Article 39. We could bring it up again before the end of the meeting. We will go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And let's close the vote. All right, Article 39 passes. Well, we had a 2/3 majority on there, but 176 yes and 20 no. Moving on to Article 40.
I move the town indefinitely postpone Article 40.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 40. We'll go ahead and open it for debate.
The Planning Board did not recommend favorable action on Article 40 by 5-0 vote, and for the same reason, it's covered under Article 26.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go ahead and get, we're working on getting that up on the screen, and while we do so, again, a yes vote would indefinitely postpone Article 40, and no vote would not indefinitely postpone Article 40, and it could, well, we're going to end the meeting after this one, right? So, but it could be brought up again.
While we're waiting for that to come up on the screen, I forgot to mention that today is Beth's birthday. She's here at town meeting representing the Finance Committee.
Happy birthday, Beth.
Happy birthday, Beth.
Okay, we've got it up on the screen now, so we'll go ahead and open the vote. 10 seconds. And we'll close the vote. Okay, on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 40, it passes by a majority vote of 183 yes and 14 no. And now it's time for everybody's favorite motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye!
All those opposed? All right, great. Well, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your coming out three times. I really appreciate your time and dedication to this town and your support as well. Everybody travel home safely, have a great evening, and enjoy the rest of school vacation. Oh, thank you.